Next, we have the wastewater treatment facility improvement project approval of plans and establishment of minimum project experience requirements, sole source purpose, purchase of equipment, and the award of contract management services. That was a mouthful. And we have Mandy. Thank you.
Mayor and the council members, good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the wastewater treatment facility improvement, improvements project. The plant and specifications of this project have been completed by the design engineer, which has been approved by the council in November 2016. And at the end of the presentation, I will be making some recommendations to move forward on this project. In the background, our wastewater treatment facility that serves our community to treat the wastewater and also to meet the regulatory requirements from the state and the federal government has been, began operation in 1972 over, just over 45 years. And the current permitted capacity of our plant is 10 and a half MGD, the annual average flow. And the current average flow that is coming into the facility is six and, six and a half MGD, six and a half million gallons a day. So this picture shows the aerial view of the major components or the process units of the facility. This facility has two treatment trains. One is the liquid train, treatment of the liquid, and then, then the handling of the solids. And this picture shows the proposed project that we are going to make recommendations on. This project consists of the replacement of the existing bar, one of the bar screens, and digestor lid replacements, and then the new dewatering facility construction, and the facility-wide electrical and control system improvements throughout the facility. And most of, most of our electrical system is over 45 years old and need replacement. So this is a, this project has been identified as a capital improvement program. And generally, the capital improvement program projects are being designed and constructed to last for over 30 years of time. So in a big picture, this project falls into a big picture CAP project. And so there is an absolute need to proactively address the aging facility infrastructure and to also address the safety concerns out of those aging facility infrastructure, and also to procure and install suitable equipment to meet the plant's specific needs for today's needs and also the anticipated future needs. And our design engineer did some studies, technical studies, and, and lifecycle cost analysis plays an important part in the selection of the technology and what type of improvements we are going to improve. And based on those analyses and the studies, this project went into design and, and the design is complete on this project. So this slide shows the, the list of the priority one and priority two projects that has been, were part of 2016 rate study. The red ink project shows the projects in the project that we are talking today. The green ink shows the project that has been completed with a 50% grant from the state. And the projects in the black ink are in the other phases of either pre-design or, or design or, or planning, planning stages. And they're going to be coming into the future for council's consideration. So one of the project is the plant headworks where all the wastewater from the community enter into the wastewater facility, the two bar screens. And these bar screens are over about approximately 18 years old. And they're, they're are not reliable. They have a lot of maintenance issues, very complicated maintenance, including safety concerns for the repair personnel. And it, they require a, most of the time confined space entry, which is very difficult.
Through the mayor. On some of these, when, if you could go and, and maybe explain the depth of that and what it does, just a little bit more in depth, I think it would be suitable for the public to know. You're looking at those absent the smell in that room, which I think would be helpful to shorten the process. But if, if you could kind of explain on each one of these, what they're doing and the purpose for them.
Absolutely, absolutely. So here at the headworks, as I mentioned earlier, the wastewater enter into the wastewater facility through a 54-inch diameter pipeline. And the wet well, these bar screens are installed in the ground, is about 25 feet deep. And there's not a whole lot of room for the, for the maintenance needs. So we need a, need an equipment to, that, that we can maintain above ground that doesn't require entry. So what does these bar screens do? They screen the, the large materials like tea branches, or some clouds, or some other things. So openings in the bar screens is about quarter inches. So any, any stuff that is more than quarter inch in size gets captured in these bar screens before the water goes to further treatment. So our design engineer did a technical study to look at the different technologies available in the market and all the different available bar screen equipment, based on our established design criteria to meet our, our plant's specific needs, and also to satisfactorily perform, performance history of those units that they studied. And based on their study, they are recommending to sole source a bar screen equipment to Dupron Corporation. And staff also visited Napa sanitation district where Dupron bar screens have been installed in, within the last 10 years. And we talked to their maintenance staff, we talked to their operations staff, and they're very satisfied with the performance of those bar screens. So the next process unit is we are talking about on this project is the digesters. So the digesters digest the sludge, the solids to stabilize, to stabilize them. It's, it's like a digestion process like in our stomach. It's, it's, they need a minimum of 15 days of retention time of all the solid that enter into the digester. And it's a biological process to stabilize the solids. And then the digesters, then the digester sludge goes to the dewatering process where we take the water out, most of the bulk of the water out before it goes to the landfill. So these digesters have been in service over, for over 45 years. And their covers are floating covers, and they are rusting, and they're structurally not safe. And engineers' recommendation is to, is to replace them with the, with a different type of covers. Our design engineer did a technical study to check what type of covers are available and which are suitable for our treatment plant. And their recommendation is to replace the existing covers with the fixed covers. And on the fixed covers, there are two different types. One is the coated carbon steel covers. They're low in cost, what, but they're expensive in maintenance that we have to take the digesters down, out of service for, for a month or two, to recoat them in order to extend their life. So there is a lot of maintenance costs associated with that. The other alternative is the stainless steel. Stainless steel does not require any, any coating, and they're very minimal in maintenance, and they do not require any downtime on them. So recommendation is from the design engineer based on the cost, although the cost of the fixed stainless steel covers is higher, but their lifecycle cost is lower as compared to the, compared to the coated carbon steel covers. And next slide shows the difference. The stainless steel's initial cost, just for the covers only, is approximately $4.4 million, whereas the coated carbon steel covers is $3 million initial cost, which is $1.4 million less than the stainless steels. However, if we compare about 40 years, or 40 to 45 years of lifecycle cost analysis, the cost for the coated carbon steels, which includes coating and the maintenance, goes to $4.9 million. And another important aspect is that as we receive more flow with the community growth, we, in order to do the coating of those covers, we will not be able to take a digester out of service for a month or two to do the coating, because that will shorten the sludge retention time less than required 15 days. So what that will require is the addition of a third digester that in today's dollars, and the estimated cost for the third tank is $10 million.
I'd like to make a comment on this. I've worked in these smaller sized plant like this, and we had different materials. We had the carbon based, and then we also had stainless steel. And the lifecycle of the stainless steel and the maintenance and, is phenomenal compared. And your statement on postponing the third digester, like you said, it's only 10 million now, but when, you know, if we have to do that in the future, you're talking 15, 20 million dollars that, and that would significantly impact the wastewater costs to the citizens in the future. And so I just, I've worked with stainless steel systems, and they're so much better, although the initial cost is significantly higher. It definitely is much more reliable and durable for the long term. So I've had experience with, personally with that.
Correct, thank you. So the staff's, design engineer's recommendation is to, is to construct this project with the stainless steel covers. So the next process is the sludge that gets digested in the, in the digesters goes to a process called dewatering. So right now, we have only one belt press, which is about 18, about 18 years old, belt press. And there's no redundancy. If this belt press goes out of service for maintenance or repair, then we don't have any place to store the sludge other than keeping in the digesters. And so, so we, we have to construct a new system. And this, this, this belt press is also, is at the, towards its end of its lifecycle. So based on, based on the plant needs for more reliability and for redundancy, and to, to get a newer, cleaner, better technology, the design engineer performed a analysis for technical study. The technical study also includes staff contacted five different, five different vendors or the manufacturers of three different technologies to come to our wastewater facility to do their pilot testing with their trailer mounted smaller scale unit on our sludge. And all of those five vendors did the study, and they submitted the report to us and the proposal. And those proposals and reports have been reviewed by our design engineer and were part, and are also part of our, the technical study. So in the technical study, the design engineer performed 20-year lifecycle cost comparison of seven different manufacturers of four, four different technologies from seven different manufacturers. So Huber Technologies screw press, a newer technology relatively speaking, came out to the top for the 20-year lifecycle cost comparison. And based on that, the design engineer and the staff did a sole source negotiation with the Dupron equipment, the manufacturer of the screw presses. And, and the, the things, important things are this press is going to meet the established design criteria. And, and it is based on the 20, 20-year lifecycle cost comparison. And it's, these screw presses satisfactory performance history. For example, the city staff visited City of Oakdale's wastewater treatment facility where the screw presses from the same manufacturer have been in operation for a number of years, and they're very satisfied with it. And we also reviewed other projects where this, this technology has been running successfully. So based on that, the design engineer designed the project based on the Huber screw presses. And the staff is going to recommend, make a recommendation to sole source three screw presses to Huber Technology Incorporated. So now the cost of the project, the estimated construction, construction cost is, is $17.6 million. And then engineer services during construction to review the submittals, to provide all the related services that are, that are needed, absolutely needed, is about $650,000. Construction, management, and inspection, it is pretty typical to have the construction management firm to do the construction management and inspection, because the city staff has other commitments for other projects and do not have time to, to do a construction management inspection for this project. And the city has went through a request for proposal process, and where we selected one vendor, one company consulting firm out of Folsom called ICM Group that we are going to recommend, make a recommendation on that for the award of the professional services agreement. Project administration, control systems programming, the programming of the automation system, bill be a professional services agreement, and a project contingency based on any unknowns or any, based on the, the bid environment these days, the bids are coming sometimes surprisingly high. So the, there have been a huge change in the cost estimates since we adopted a rate study. In the rate study, these projects have been approximately over, little over $9 million of construction cost. And, and the staff did analysis of why, what the main reasons are for the huge cost estimate changes. There are the construction market, there are number of large projects occurring in, in this area. And, and the construction workers are hard to find on these projects. And there is also a rising materials cost. For example, just a big projects, just over $3 million is going to break ground this summer at Sacramento Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility, one of the projects of their $2 billion upgrades. And then the changes in the scope of the work during design, we made some, the staff had to make some changes based on the technical studies for the, based on the long-term needs of the facility. For example, the, the dewatering facility, initially, it was assumed that we probably we will need, we will put a second dewatering unit upstairs in the existing building. But in the technical study, that was not the case in the long-term needs. The building needs an expensive retrofit, and it's also not going to meet the project criteria for the plant needs in the long term. And the design engineer recommended a new facility downstairs, right next to the existing facility, for the long-term needs. And the digester covers from stainless to stainless steel. Initially, they were assumed just a quarter carbon steel. So, and also the plant-wide electrical instrumentation control system, when the design engineer did a lot of investigation during the design phase, they found a lot of unknown things. And their recommendation is to move and to make those improvements now, which will save approximately 35% cost instead of doing individually in the future. The next steps of the project, with council's approval, staff will advertise the project plan and specifications called bid documents this month or early next month, and then the bid opening will occur in July of 2018. An anticipated award will be in September, October, and then startup construction and follow-up this year and completion of the project and follow-up 2020. The fiscal impact, finance department is working to fund this project through bond proceeds in the amount of $22.6 million, the total cost of the project. And the current wastewater rate structure will be able to pay the debt payments and maintain required debt coverage ratio on this project. And more accurate evaluation will be provided at a time of award after the bids have been opened, after the negotiation for the professional services have been made, and more accurate numbers will be presented at that time, at the time of the award. So at this time, I would like to make recommendations. As written in the staff report, number one is to adopt a resolution approving, approving the plant and specifications for the wastewater treatment facility improvements project and authorizing advertisement for the bids on the project. And number two, adopt a resolution approving the minimum project experience requirements for the general contractor and electrical subcontractors with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city. Number three is adopt a resolution authorizing the sole source purchase at pre-negotiated pricing of one mechanical bar screen to Dupron Corporation in the amount of $292,000, and three dewatering screw presses to Huber Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $1,374,754, with the finding it is in the best interest of the city. And last item is award and agreement for professional services to ICM Group Incorporated of Folsom, California, in the amount of $1.12 million to provide construction, management, and inspection, inspection services for the wastewater treatment facility improvements project, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city. And another point to note is that although we, all the council is considering award of the professional services to ICM Group today, their agreement will be contingent upon the award of the actual construction contract. So they will not be given notice to proceed until council award the construction contract. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council for any questions.
Through the mayor. So Mandy, just for, I guess for the public to understand where these, where the funds come from, this is an enterprise fund for wastewater treatment, correct?
Correct.
And, and so all the money is generated by the users of that system.
Correct.
It's currently running at about 64% capacity, if, if my math was close in my head. I was talking to myself at the same time that I tried to do the math, so I was a little confused, but...
Yes, we have leftover capacity to add new, newer units.
Okay. And so increase in population would also be paying, and connection fees would also be paying for future expansion that would be needed. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Two things, with the future expansion, any units that we need for the future to accommodate the new growth will be paid by the newer users. And when they come on our system on the existing facility for, to utilize leftover capacity, they will be paying to, in general terms, just in general terms, to buy that capacity of the plant. And so they will be contributing money through their connection fees.
Who, just in, in a general sense, who owns that, that plant?
That plant is owned by the, the citizens of City, City of Yobe City.
So it's, this is their facility that, that they chose years ago in the 60s to go forward with, the maintenance of it. In your estimation, has the maintenance been an, an active maintenance program to, you know, constantly look at, at issues and identify them to move forward?
Yeah, the maintenance, so, so far, right now, it's, it's challenging, the maintenance part is very challenging on this age facility. That's why the, the staff will bring the priority projects to the council's consideration, consideration and the rate study. So, yeah, right now, the staff is doing the best to keep the facility as, as, as best as they can.
And would you consider this plant an active, a highly active plant, given our, our population?
Correct.
Would, it would be considered highly active?
Yes, correct.
What's the approximate power consumption in dollars per year for that facility?
For the facility, right now, about, about half a million dollar power consumption.
Annually?
Annually is the correct dynamic of numbers. It's in, in the ballpark, in the ballpark, I don't have the correct numbers.
So keeping the electrical switchgear and everything else up is one of those critical components for failure?
Absolutely. The electrical system runs the whole facility. If there's a little bit of glitch on it, and we cannot operate our facility, and we cannot treat the wastewater, we will be out of compliance from the state permit, and there will be consequences and the amount of fines.
And I'm glad you brought up the F-word as, as you finally got there. When we look at violations that occur, can you give us just a general sense of, of what those fines are and who fines us for, for different violations?
Correct. So this, this facility in, in general, well, this facility is being operated under a NPDES permit called National Pollution and Discharge Elimination System Permit. And it is regulated locally by the Sacramento Regional Water Quality Control Board from Sacramento. And they write us to give us the permit to operate the plant, and they also give the specific requirements to meet when, when we discharge the water to the river, Feather River, or to the ponds, which are also located in the Feather River flood plan. And in general, most of the violations are about $3,000 per violation per day. And, and based on the severity of the violence, that, those are the minimum, those are minimum violations. And based on the severity, if, for example, if our plant fails to treat, and it's, it's, if it's a severe, then it could go to hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it could be also legally challenged by some other private org, private groups. And it becomes expensive, very expensive.
And thank you for answering all those. It's, it's just that there's always a lapse of time, and I think oftentimes, maybe memory also is, is to the importance of a plant like this, what it does. Being a highly active plant, it doesn't have time to be shut down to, to go back and, and fix things. It's constantly in operation, it's highly functional, and, and when you walk in there, you know that you're in a, in a facility that is getting business done. And that's what is important. And, and I just want to thank you for, for all of those answers, because I think it's kind of an important piece for the citizens to realize that this is theirs, and, and it just needs to be continued, the maintenance needs to continue and be utilized to its highest efficiency. And even in the dewatering process where they, where we're now hauling off sludge that used to sit on site for...
For months.
Months. And, and that's daily haul.
We could correct that, John, for about 25 years.
Well, no. Well, I'm, I'm well aware how long it, it was there, but, but I also am the, the guy back in 2011 that, that gave it the term sedentary heat-induced treatment odors. And, and we got that product moved off-site daily. And it's because there's homes around there, and it, it does, it, it creates an odor if it stays on site. Again, the, the advances at, at this location, along with the solar farm and everything else on site, has been a remarkable process. This is just the next step in keeping a, a system viable, alive, and progressing forward for growth in our city.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Through the mayor. One thing I did forget to ask while we were on the tour, I know we're going to be consolidating all of the electrical, saving the 35% cost, which, that's very wise to do and get it done now. Is there going to be power efficiency savings at the same time with the newer systems? Because I, having worked with types of systems that I saw, the older ones, they're, you know, more analog, they're more, they use more power. Will these ones be much more efficient in their... Will these ones be much more efficient in their use? Is that?
Yes, correct, correct. The digesters will be much more prof, uh, efficient in energy as well as operation. And the newer technology, the de-watering, it uses less energy than the existing belt press. Correct.
And I went blank on the other one. That's okay, that was the main one.
All right. Have any questions? Nope, and, and we lost one. Okay. All right, thank you. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and open to the public, it looks like we have Elaine Miles that would like to speak.
Elaine Miles. I know this was built decades ago. But what was the capacity? And what is our population up to that capacity? And what is the future use for population? I think we need to look at how our population is or is not growing. As I heard in the news, a lot of these country areas are losing all the young people. We only have older people like us, and we had a whole room full here. But I'd really like to know what we're really using and what the future is, capacity-wise.
So the staff do analysis on the future, future flow projections, time to time. Last time, the, the Public Works Department did a, did a master plan update that also includes the future projection at the time. So now the, the projections will be completed this, this year. But for part of this project, before designing any of the facilities, the design engineers looked carefully the future, anticipated future growth in, in the population. So these facilities are going to just serve for the existing residents, just the improvements of the existing facility. So we are not adding a new capacity for any new customer, this is just for the existing facility. If we undersize any of the, any of the components of the plant, then, then it will be an issue with the, with the state because they permit, permitted us ten and a half MGDF capacity. And in order to, they will degrade our capacity. In order to regain it, it's a, it's a huge expensive process again. And, and dollar cost-wise, if we say that the new process units we are making smaller, they're not going to make a much difference in the total construction cost because it's just the P, it's just the cost of the equipment. I assume that answers the question.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me. My question is, what is the capacity? And to me, that is household for this community. And are we using it at what percentage?
Right now, we're using the facility at, to its capacity.
It was sixty percent, wasn't it?
Sixty percent, you know, so we're not.
Correct. The, the facility, the per household.
Getting bigger.
Per household, we are estimating about over, just over three hundred, three hundred gallons per household per day. And if we are receiving eight million gallons of flow versus six and a half, what we are receiving today, the facility will still need to run.
Right.
And overall, additional cost for the ONM will be a little bit extra, but it still needs to run, do the capacity. So yes, the plant is running under its total, the, the maximum capacity.
To the max capacity of where, where we should be. Yeah.
Through, through the mayor.
Second, the second part.
I've asked for the microphone, Elaine. We're the council and, and the questions need to come to us. We've already asked some questions about capacity. And so we've, we've gotten an answer on that. But what I want to point out is, Mandeep will answer that to us as the mayor directs him to on, on any type of questions. So we get to ask him questions clearly. So if you could step aside, I need to, I need to ask Mandeep a couple more questions, just for clarification.
I would also appreciate the response to when we are going to reach that additional forty percent capacity. Thank you.
So, Mandeep, where I was going to head back to was our largest in, are in service to that facility industrially, who does that come from?
It comes from Sun Suite.
And, and the volume there is critical to the, to the operation of our plant. And partly because of what is brought in, correct? And being able to continue to operate our digesters at a level that it doesn't, the incoming sugars and things off of their processing, their pH levels and everything else don't kill our, our systems down. Am I correct on that?
Correct. About, we are receiving approximately fifty percent of the plant loading. We are not, I'm not talking about the flow. The flow from Sun Suite is less than fifty percent, but their loading is approximately fifty percent of the total loading of the plant. And it is very critical to keep all the components, including the digesters, running efficiently as, as much as they can in order to serve Sun Suite's needs.
And, and our current plant capacity allows for us to operate that more efficiently, am I correct? And where we don't kill off a digester
Correct.
at any given time.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Part of this is for, for commercial purposes, that, that this design and the design engineers have come forward with these recommendations.
So I, I would like to respond to Ms. Miles' question in regard to how much, how many additional homes could we serve with the remaining capacity? So rule of thumb, it's about three thousand homes per million gallons. So if we have four million gallons remaining, then it'd be about twelve thousand additional homes that we would be able to serve. In terms of the number of homes that we're currently serving, it's just a little bit over that because not, the entire city's not on city sewer. And so there's still areas within the existing city that are served by septic systems that most likely someday will need to connect to city sewer.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, anyone else?
Pat Miller, and I just have a question. I thought I heard Mr. Chohan say during the presentation that the state was going to pay part of the funding for this, and I need a clarification on, on what the state is going to pay. Thank you.
Can you go over those costs, Mandeep?
Correct. So the project listed in green has been completed. This was the recycling facility study. And the cost for that was approximately hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the city already received seventy-five thousand dollars for the, for the cost. So the cost to the city was only seventy-five thousand dollars for that study. So that's the only thing I mentioned, that state has already paid for that project.
Okay, thank you.
And, and through the mayor, I guess just for, for more clarification, there will be more attempts to get grant funding and everything else as we move through some of these other items, am I correct?
Correct, correct. Staff is actively working with the state Resources Water Control Board to apply for the available, potential available grants or the low-interest loans. For example, in the past ten years, the wastewater system has received a total about seventeen million, million dollars of funding, about, out of which about six million has been in the grants. And the remaining ten, eleven million dollar was in very low-interest loans. So the staff is on top of that, and we are continuously looking on all the available opportunities to find low-interest loans and grant, and grants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who would like to speak? Nope. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Questions or motion? We just, you have to go up to the podium.
My name is Noel Miles. I live at thirteen fifty-one Jamie Drive. I've been in this city for forty-eight years, and I've been at this area for all my life. And I pay attention to things like population. The population of this whole county is ninety-two thousand people. The sign for Uba Cities says it's sixty-two thousand. If we're not, and it's been that way for twenty years, thirty years. If we're not increasing our population according to the signs, what's happening, all the money is created for this. I mean, that's just kind of a illogical question I came into, but I don't have an answer for it. So I asked you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on that?
Yeah, through the, through the mayor, the signs have changed over, over time. I, I came to work for the City of Uba City in nineteen seventy-nine. We had a population of about somewhere between eighteen and, and twenty thousand people inside the City of Uba City at that time. Let's see, that wasn't that many years ago. And it has constantly grown, and I think that those signs have changed. You know, as, as we see, as we see growth, I can, I haven't counted every one of them, but I, I will guarantee you that as the population has grown in the last ten years, we've seen a significant decrease in what the population gain was in the ten years prior to that. We were building a lot of homes twenty years ago and, and fifteen years ago, and it slowed down in two thousand and eight. And it is slowly starting to creep back up. But, but there has been a population change, trust me. And then there's been other additional areas of the county, as you are well aware, the Happy Park area came in, and that added more to the, to the actual City of Uba City. It was already on services. But those are the, the things that change signage, not necessarily the usage, so.
Right, thank you. Okay, bring it back to council. So public hearing is now closed, bring it back to council. Any questions or motion? No questions?
I'm, I'm satisfied with what staff has, first, what the engineers have come up with, what staff is supportive of, having gone through a tour of the facility and had a very clear explanation of everything that was going on and those changes. Unfortunately, there's an increase in costs, but those increase in costs are not going to go away anytime soon. We've seen that in other bid projects. Certainly the increase in some of the product to be longer-lasting, more efficient. Digester lids that don't float and move. Going up to a product that, that may have a forty-year, forty-five-year life is important. I may not have to deal with this again in my future. And the plant has capacity to grow if this city grows. It may or may not have that requirement for some time. But I think we have to maintain for the citizens of this community a viable component, and that is to get rid of waste. When I push the lever on the little white porcelain device in my house, I don't ever want to see it again. And I think it's an important part of our process to also not face fines. And to be good stewards of the environment and, and not discharge into the river the items that, that we're not supposed to be putting out there and not facing fines for it, so. It just, it makes sense. The unfortunate part, it's just a little more costly, so I'll move the item at staff's recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second? All right. All, all in paper?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Item moves forward.